Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 26th Board of Selectmen meeting. We're going to start by entering executive session and then we'll return to the audience at 7:00 PM in open session. So with that, Seth, could I get a motion to enter executive session, please?
Motion to enter into executive session to discuss and vote to accept and release or not release executive session meeting minutes for February 4th, 2020, August 4th, 2020, December 1st, 2020, February 2nd, 2021, March 30th, 2021, August 31st, 2021, and September 28th, 2021, and to reconvene in open session.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Ted O'Leary, yes.
Mark, yes.
Seth Ferguson, yes.
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. We'll see everyone in a half an hour. Allegiance, we have lots of visitors tonight. So Mr. Barrows, Mr. Feeny, can you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone here this evening for citizens input? Anything come in? Nope? Okay. All right, so we'll go right into our first agenda item, which is the Foxborough Commission on Disabilities Awards presentation. So if you don't mind just coming up to the front. You might just want to sit near a microphone, too, if you'll be speaking. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Every year, except for COVID, which did a number on everybody, the Foxborough Commission on Disability has awarded an award for people who have gone above and beyond to help people with disabilities. And the first person we have is our business award winner. Amy Gagden?
Gagden, yes.
Okay. G-A-G-N-O-N is the general manager of the Foxborough McDonald's. She has two employees with intellectual disabilities working at her restaurant on Route 1 on North Street in Foxborough. One has been with the company for over five years and the second young man, a little less. Ms. Gagden reports that they are hard workers and valued employees. She feels strongly that businesses should be open-minded and flexible when hiring and not overlook potential terrific employees. Both young men participate in a vocational program sponsored by the Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services, otherwise known as DDS, and the program is facilitated by HMEA. Love those acronyms. Located in Plainville. And HMEA seeks out area businesses with job openings and matches up individuals in the program with jobs in the community. So the Foxborough Commission on Disability is pleased to recognize the McDonald's Restaurant for their commitment to improving the lives of people with disabilities. And we have this plaque that hopefully Amy will display in her restaurant. So thank you very much.
No, thank you. It's an honor.
Want to say yes or will say?
I mean, I've grown up with my cousin with disabilities my whole life and I always thought he's actually part of HMEA and I always thought it was a great program. And then I started working at McDonald's and we found out that they actually have employees that we take on and it was just amazing to be a part of it.
Very nice. So thank you again. And I was, it just by accident that I found out about McDonald's and I was happy to recognize them. So Margaret, are you all set or?
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay. Margaret, she's on as our co-chair and she just came on. And I know she has a vested interest in the HMEA program. Our second award winner is our individual award. We have a business and an individual. The Gallagher family was not able to come with us tonight, but we received a lovely application from the mother, Susan Gallagher, and she described Sherri Gallagher as a caring daughter who put her life on hold for a year to take care of her mother, Susan. Sherri's mother suffered a medical event that left her paralyzed from the waist down. After a stint in the hospital and then in a rehab facility, rehabilitation facility, Susan moved in with her daughter and grandchildren. Sherri had to decline a job opportunity because Susan's care required all of her time. And Sherri and her daughters, two daughters, nursed Susan for over a year, providing around-the-clock care, administering medication, transporting her to and from medical and physical therapy appointments. And Sherri has demonstrated an admirably unselfish attitude that exemplifies going above and beyond. So the Foxborough Commission on Disability is pleased to award this award to Sherri Gallagher and I will make sure the Gallagher family, Sherri Gallagher and her two daughters receive that. And during COVID and all the people that suffer a disability that need care, there are many selfless, you know, family members and other friends that helped them get through this. And we are also dedicating a accessible picnic bench on the common to all the caregivers for all the people who suffered and died from COVID in 2020. So you'll see that on the common soon. So thank you very much for getting this to the public's attention.
Thank you for all you do. Amy, can I just say I have a son with a disability. He's autistic and he's 17, so he's approaching adulthood. And as a parent to McDonald's or any other Shaw's and Sharon really does a great job with that, too. And, you know, these kids are capable of working. They just need somebody to give them a little patience and a little time. And thank you very much as a parent of a child that I hope will be in the workforce at some point. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We recognized a Stop &amp; Shop in Foxborough a couple of years ago and Stop &amp; Shop in Mansfield also hires a lot of people with disabilities, so. And they're great employees, they value their job, they're extremely reliable, and they take great pride in what they do.
Absolutely.
Okay. So thank you. We're going to go out and take a photo.
Is a gentleman here for this one?
You want to go? Yeah, go.
Oh, wait, Amy, have a seat.
Not done yet.
More to come. Just from the House, we have a citation. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers to all the Mass House offices sincere congratulations to McDonald's Restaurant in recognition and celebration of your Foxborough Above and Beyond Award. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. So it's given today, the 26th of October. Speaker Mariaano and yours truly, Jay Barrows. And I just want to say, you know, to your point, the opportunity now that we're coming out of COVID and HMEA has got a lot of students, clients, that they're trying to get into the workforce. We're all looking for people to work and they are very capable and they're very loyal and they're excited to go to work every day, just like me. So it's important that we continue to foster that, you know, relationship. And the work that you're doing there is great and we really, really appreciate it. Great service to the community. So thank you.
And thank you, Representative. We have more. I'm not to be outdone by the House. I joined from the State Senate and I want to offer a citation. Now, this is a big deal and I'm sure members of the board, you recognize it is not an easy time and a lot of people have been through some pretty tough challenges, especially over the last couple of years. And to see, you know, a business like McDonald's step up, to see our other award recipients step up and realize that it's not just about us as individuals, it's about all of us. And this is a pretty cool deal. And to all the work that the Commission on Disabilities does, thank you, thank you, thank you for the work that you do every single day, but especially in recognizing the people of our community. This is what makes Foxborough special. I know you all agree. This is what makes this an incredible town. And I know we are joined as well by Kevin, who I believe is one of the McDonald's wardens, right? So round of applause to Kevin. So we'll have Kevin join us, myself and the representative, while we give this citation. I'll read it quickly from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate. Being known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to McDonald's Restaurant in recognition of receiving the Foxborough Commission on Disability Above and Beyond Business Award. And being further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President and attached to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk. And it is signed by our Senate President Karen E. Spilka and authored by a very proud and grateful State Senator Paul Feeny. Kevin and McDonald's, Amy, congratulations.
Thank you. Do you want to get a quick picture?
Yes, we're here in the hallway. Is something going on?
Nice job.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. All right, thanks. Thanks, Jay.
I think Christina may just want to grab a picture, Jay, before you go. Thank you very much. Congratulations again. Thank you. All right, so moving right along, I see Ally's here. And she's up next to talk about our Veterans Day events. Always a pleasure to have Ally join us.
Always a pleasure to be here.
I know everyone can always hear you by near your microphone, if you don't mind.
Testing. Hi, how's everybody doing? Okay, so Veterans Day is my absolutely favorite day of the year, not just as a veteran, but as your Veteran Service Officer this year. Oh, boy, it was difficult to plan. We didn't have an event last year, COVID, but this year I've worked so hard and I'm so excited about the program. We have a Paralympian, Joel Hunt, is our guest speaker this year. You know, he'll tell his story, but quickly, he joined the Army, went downrange to Iraq, got blown up, disabled veteran, paralyzed, moved in with his parents. Parents were like, well, you need to go do the ski thing from Wind of Warriors. He's like, I'm not doing it. Dad picked him up and said, you're going to do it. So he does it. Turns out that he really likes skiing, so he practiced every day and the U.S. Olympic team said, hey, why don't you come ski for us? So he did. So he was paid. Oh, he was a Paralympian, so he went to Russia and did that whole Olympic Games out there. So I'm so excited. He is coming. And then back by popular request is the 215th Army Band. They are coming back. This time they are bringing their drum and fife band, they got a popular music group, and then they have their, I want to say it's their brass ensemble, but I'm not sure. But it's three different pieces, so they'll play for about an hour. Then after the ceremony, we're all going to the cafeteria where the Sarcastic Swine Restaurant will be catering. They grill on site and there's brisket and mac and cheese and cornbread and Caesar salad and grilled chicken. And I'm just very excited. I'm trying to get the unlikely strummers to play for us while we eat in the cafeteria. That's still in the works. They're so good and they're, you know, they're lovely folks and they play over at the COA and I love them dearly. And that's it. That's this year's program. It is not at the high school. It did have to change the venue because of the drama club. So this year it is at the Ahern Middle School. Doors open at about 10:30. Program starts at 11:00. I will be there with bells and whistles on. I am so excited for Veterans Day this year. You guys have no idea.
You can feel the excitement in here.
I can't catch my breath and I'm so excited.
Very excited.
Any questions?
Oh, just thank you so much for all your work putting it together and everything you do all year.
Thank you. So I will see everybody there? Yes? Yep, with an appetite?
The 11th of Thursday?
Yes. So it's November 11th at 11:00 AM at the Ahern, not the high school. That's the one big change we've had to do, but it'll be broadcast live on cable access, so everything's good to go and I'm so excited.
I will be out of state, so I will, you know I'll go back and watch on cable access.
Bummer. I'll wave hi to you.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay, well, I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much, Ally.
I'll see you around. Bye.
Thanks, Ally.
All right, rolling in right into our next favorite department head. Got a bunch of them tonight. Mr. Cutler to talk about the updated precinct map and then to give us a little bit of an overview of what to expect with special town meeting on November 15th.
How is everybody?
Good, thanks. How are you?
I'm going to just put the maps up for everyone to see.
Yep.
Yes.
So this is the map as it exists right now.
Okay.
And the map really didn't change that much. Essentially what they had to do was fix the numbers in precinct two. So right here you can see this little jog that's precinct three that goes into the other side of Mechanic Street. So Philip Lane, Palmer Road, Cheryl Drive, that area. And this part of Summer Street right now on the side of railroad tracks is currently in precinct one. But that's going to change. The new map, as you can see, this was the corner where precinct three bled into the other side of Mechanic Street, so it's going to be a straight shot down Mechanic Street. So that little piece is changing. And now on my side of Summer Street, there up to the railroad tracks, that's all now going to be part of precinct two. So that's the only change in the map. Some interesting things, reason why it had to happen. I had asked that they keep the precincts the way they were, but the population, according to the U.S. Census, now is 18,6. And when they do a median population for the five precincts, it comes up to 3,724. Okay? What they try to do is keep the variance from each precinct plus or minus 5% of that. So when I asked them to keep the precincts, unfortunately precinct two was minus 7.212%. So for that reason, we had to change the map. So it's actually a much smaller change than we had gone through 10 years ago, so it's kind of encouraging. And also you probably saw stories in the paper where we were going to lose the precinct, precinct three was going to go to Ted Phillips District and Sharon, but they voted last Thursday and they kept Foxborough and won precinct, so.
So that's off the table.
That was, you know, as far as that vote, unless anything changes. So if anybody has any questions about the mapping process, this has been going on since the early spring with the help of Ryan Norton from the DPW. He and I went through some of the initial plan processes and then we just finalized everything this past week. We have to have it done by the end of the month, but we were waiting for our final maps to come in from the state. That's why we scheduled it for tonight. And it requires a vote by the board, which then is certified by me. So I believe that Christina has provided that in your packet. But entertain any questions?
No, so it's good. It's just really that one neighborhood, near Mechanic Street and then Summer Street that's impacted.
Correct. Yeah, 10 years ago, both sides of Summer Street were in precinct one, but the opposite side of Summer Street went precinct two 10 years ago and now this side is going.
Okay.
So just, Bob had reached out during the process a few weeks ago and he was nervous because some of the changes they were proposing would have been very problematic for him and for, you know, the town. And so he'd reached out to, and we both reached out to our legislative delegation and they helped considerably in that process. And lo and behold, they did change their position on it last week. So it was helpful to get that done. So I appreciate your efforts on that, Bob, and I think the result that we got is a good one based on Bob's efforts to try and get to get us there.
I would echo that would really helpful on the part of Jay Barrows and Paul Feeny. We both called the head of the joint commission on the House side and I know they spoke to him and I think because of that, that helped us out.
It was helpful, yeah.
That's great.
But it's still problematic for a lot of other towns. What was happening is they're basing the redistricting plans on the 2010 maps and not the current maps. So where we would have had a problem, that corner up on Mechanic Street would have been precinct two for us, but in that district it would be part of precinct three, so in precinct two we would add a split precinct. And so we would add two separate ballots for precinct two, which would have been problematic.
Yeah.
That's where problems happen, mistakes happen, so. Luckily, it seems that that has been abated, so.
All right, great. I have no further questions. Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay.
Motion to accept the reprecincting plan for the town of Foxborough is updated by the town clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Excellent.
Excellent. Moving on to town meeting.
Yes, so right now the plans are, you know, it's not going to be as buttoned down as it was over the last year and a half. Sorry. Thank you. You know, we do hope that everybody takes whatever precautions they feel comfortable with. I know the schools have a policy. Unfortunately, we don't fall under their policy because it's voting and we can't be the mask police. I am going to have signs up asking people to be respectful of others and to mask up where appropriate and we're going to recommend masks, but if someone chooses not to wear one, there's not a lot that we can do about it. I discussed this at length with Frank Spillane last Friday after you and I talked, but we will have signage, we'll have hand sanitizer, those kind of things. I'm not as worried about spacing as before. Again, I think we're at a point where people got to take some of their own responsibility and do what's comfortable for them, but we will have, you know, the signs up and do the best we can. I don't, you know, don't expect that we're going to have 500 or 600 people either, so, you know, with a smaller crowd, it's easier to space out and people can do what's comfortable for them.
Okay. Yeah, the question came up because the schools have a policy, like my son goes to basketball and even though that's not school related, it's in a school building, so they had to wear masks. So I had asked, you know, town meeting is in a school building, what does it fall under? Almost like Ally's event, too. Like, I don't know if that needs to have a conversation about what's needed because it's in a school building, but, you know, just making sure everyone's respectful to whatever the policy is, you know, between voting and the school building and everything else. So we wanted to just have a discussion just so there was no surprises.
Right.
And everyone had expectations about where we were.
Yeah, I do know, you know, it came up, obviously, especially last year when things were more hot with the pandemic and, you know, the state indicated to us that if it involves voting, you cannot prohibit someone from coming in and voting. So, you know, we will do our best and, you know, I would expect most people to be respectful of other people and wear masks where appropriate, so.
And the school is okay with that policy? Because we could always be somewhere else that if, like, just making sure that they're also okay with wherever we're going.
I mean, we're going to be limited to the auditorium. We're not going to be going in and out of the building and so, you know, that space is ours for the purpose of that meeting, so I don't expect there to be any issues.
Okay. But it's probably worth a conversation, too, just on the Veterans Day thing, just to make sure there's no surprises since that's in a school building as well. Just a little bit different than the town hall buildings. Different things, different rules.
Yeah. And it should be a fairly quick meeting. It's only 13 articles.
13 articles, sorry.
So.
7:30 start?
7:30 start, as usual. We'll be there 6:30 getting set up and should be ready to go.
Yeah, and hopefully it's not a late night. Hopefully we're fly through it all. Move right along.
Good.
And Bill, do you want to talk at all about some upcoming program you have, just to get people ready, warrant articles if they're watching this?
Right, so we are going to meet on November 8th, Christina? Is it the 8th or?
Yes, November 8th at 1:00 PM, 1:00 PM cable access.
We're going to meet in this room here. We're going to tape from this room here to just do an overview of the entire warrant. And then I'm also doing a meeting the next day with the seniors.
February 10th, the Wednesday.
November 10th. November 10th, not February.
2:00 PM.
Yeah, that's right, at 2:00 PM to update the seniors as well. So we've got two meetings planned to try and update folks to keep them apprised of what's going on and make sure that they're aware of what's going on and that they attend the meeting if necessary. Obviously, the key is to get a quorum, right?
Right.
So we're going to make sure we have enough people to get the votes in, to get the work done, get the town's business done.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yeah, place to be. November 15th, 7:30 PM.
That's it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You, too.
Thanks, Bob.
Continuing on the favorite department head train, here we go. Rolling into DPW. All right, so the next presentation is our monthly ongoing presentations that we have a department come in and give us an update on the state of the department, you know, goals for the coming year and such. So next up, we have Chris and Lance.
Hello. Good evening.
Little mouse.
I do.
Wow.
Somehow I've managed to keep it. I've had it probably for like 15 years.
Wow.
I would have lost that.
That's the electronics store, the wires. It just goes in a bucket somewhere. All right, well, thank you very much for inviting us back. Happy to be here. I brought Lance with me this time around, so he's going to help as he's put a lot of effort into a lot of the programs that we're working on right now, really over the last year and a half since he's been here. So with that, I will share my screen.
Did you hear it?
It did. I pulled it out. So we're here from the Public Works Department. You know, one of the things we've been working on as an organization, American Public Works Association, National and New England Chapter, is kind of doing a little PR for ourselves, letting people know who we are and what we're doing. So one of the things we've, you know, worked on over the last couple of years is this slogan, "Public Works Makes It Happen." So we're the ones that are out there, orange trucks, this town, green trucks, blue trucks. You know, you see us out on the roads, on the fields, working on the water. We're here every day of the year, in the middle of the night, whether it's snow or just so happens we have a rainstorm like tonight, we'll be in later on dealing with puddles and I'm sure, fingers crossed, not dealing with trees down. But so that's the start. Just a little bit about us. We have really five different divisions, Highway Department, Tree and Park, Equipment Maintenance, Water and Sewer, and Engineering. Along with those, we do have an administrative staff in the office of five staff members, employees that support all of that. So they're involved with everything that we do and are, you know, kind of the backbone of our organization, what we do from one day to the next. Highway Department is kind of like the Swiss Army knife of the town. We have eight field staff, two of the administrative staff that support them. We do everything from rebuilding drainage structures, which we did a lot of this year in the Edwards Road, Young Road neighborhood in preparation of paving, you know, one or two years out from now. We do ADA ramps on all the sidewalks in town. So that is something where we have in Foxborough, 583 curb ramps in town. So those are all along the sidewalks. Every time you get to a street, there's supposed to be an ADA compliant ramp there with a detector panel. That is something that we actually went out and used a consultant to do a study on those sidewalks and those ramps. Only 90 of those are compliant with ADA right now, or I should say were compliant when we did the study a year ago. So that leaves 493 around town that are not in compliance with ADA. So one of the things we have to do in that plan and that transition plan is to actually work on fixing that. So getting to the point where someday all 583 or more at the time, you know, are compliant. So this.
Sorry, you said detector ramps, are they like bumps or ridges or?
Yeah, so it's the red or yellow panel that has the bumps on it when you get to the end of the sidewalk at an intersection.
That's what I thought.
Yep. So Lance worked diligently with Sean in the Highway Department Division to identify the priority areas. We're looking at focusing around schools, high foot traffic area, and we actually worked on Cell Street this year. I think we came up with a total of 24 ramps that we did and made compliant to reduce that number down. So that's something that we have to work on. We have to move that plan forward. If we don't, then we can get, there are issues that come with that.
With the state?
Right, yeah, with ADA and with their regulations. So that's something you'll see us continue to work on. That's something that we will do in-house. And then anytime we do a bigger sidewalk project, that'll be part of that plan as well. One of the big topics this year was, was around the Common. So we had done some variations on the traffic pattern. We tried parallel parking. Well, it worked, just not the best, the right thing right now for Foxborough. So we are working on, we got paint. So if anybody didn't know, there was a, a national paint shortage among many other things.
Oh, didn't know that.
So that was something that we struggled with to actually get road paint back in stock. So we had been calling on a weekly basis down to our supplier and it finally came in after, I think, two and a half, three months. It, it showed up. Unfortunately, it showed up just as temperatures dropped and now it's raining. So. So we're waiting on a couple of dry days. Hopefully next week, the sun comes out and we'll, we'll do that restriping around the Common on the school street section. The parallel parking will go away. The angle parking will come back. We are also at the same time working, once we get the trenches backfilled, which I'll touch on next, relocating the curbing along the Common so that we can get that five-foot sidewalk in along the fence in front of the angle parking when we put that back. So we're going to be, you'll see those orange trucks up at the Common, probably straight through Thanksgiving.
Kind of treatment over the existing white lines is just up to black?
We're, we're going to, we're actually going to grind them. So they, we have a grinder that'll do, I think it's a six, maybe an eight inch width grind. And that'll just take off, you know, a tenth of an inch of, of that asphalt and it'll take the paint with it.
You won't see it through like you can right now.
Right. You won't see, it won't bleed through. And once, once we plow this winter, it'll smooth out. Anything that you do see, it'll smooth that right out and, and it'll go back to just regular asphalt without those kind of hidden lines that are there now and show up now.
How about the rumble strip that's kind of there?
So the rumble strip will, that'll go back to being the back edge of the pullout for the.
So you're normally driving through the rumble strip anymore.
Yeah. So the lanes will get shifted back to where they were and that'll be the divider between where people can back out safely from the angle parking and where the travel lane is.
That worked out well.
The big dig, as it's been deemed in Foxborough, the electrical upgrade is, is finally here. So with the exception of one spot of trench along the main street side of the Common, we have all of that conduit in the ground. All the light bases are, are in the ground. The electrician will be on site for the next three to four weeks. He'll be pulling all the wires. They'll stand up the light poles, do all the connection work. So that, the goal is by Thanksgiving to have all those lights back installed, to be lit up, to light up the Common again. So we are, we're working on that. And then the, the biggest thing will, you know, for some people is going to be how we get grass to grow. So we're going to get, get some good loom back in there. We'll do that this fall and then hydro see that in the spring and hopefully some rain and some nice spring weather, you know, gets the grass to poke through up there.
So we'll probably be looking at dirt.
Yeah, where we've, where we've put the trenches, where the pipe has gone in and, and the surrounding areas will be loomed for the winter.
It's probably better to let them, to let them settle anyways because you'll get some settlement during the winter and you'll probably have to redress them in some areas for the spring, the spring.
Well, you can't grow grass in the winter either. So it's, it is what it is.
Interestingly enough, if you plant grass in the wintertime and then it snows over it, it actually helps it, believe it or not.
Yeah.
It does help.
If, if it gets to that freezing point, it'll go dormant and then it's just there in the spring and you don't have to plant in the spring.
Quick question. Any issues? I had a couple of people, this is like in this grocery store, whatever, say. So are all the trees okay up on the Common with all the digging? Anybody inquire about that? You know, everybody's always worried about something, everything, when the digging and roots coming up. Did you have any, anything that you think, think you might lose any of the trees or things go as you planned?
It doesn't look like we hit anything major. One of the things we did adjust was we took the, all the conduit and we pushed everything back off of the, the edge of the walkways. That existing electrical work that was there ran right along the edge of the sidewalk, the walkways, which some of those trees are, you know, two feet, three feet in diameter and they're right against the sidewalk. So that electrical conduit's, you know, under a tree some, somewhere and is going to stay there for, for the duration.
Good.
So we did shift, we did shift that back to get away from the sidewalks and the trees.
Yep.
That way we weren't going around those obstacles. Everything's in a nice straight line. And we did have, one of the nice things that we have is Ryan Norton, who, you know, Bob spoke about him a couple of minutes ago, runs our GIS and our GPS unit. We had him up there on a regular basis, actually GPS locating all of that electrical work, all those bases. So that somewhere down the line, when somebody goes to do work up there, we will have a plan of where everything is, which we did not have for the direct burial, which is why the lights just got shut off. Because as we were digging, we wanted to make sure we weren't digging through live, live power. So.
So no pressure, but to get that done for Thanksgiving.
I, I put it in, I almost didn't put it in writing, but I put it in writing. So it's here.
Weekly.
But Deb G has been like, are we lighting, are we lighting the tree? Right? Usually that's the weekend.
So, and then just, you know, one thing we did accomplish, we, we were holding off a lot of our paving work this year. We've been waiting on the West Street Dam project, which has been in the works for a few years now. We had a, a small delay with, with an obuster and an appeal on some of our permits over there. So we did shift some of that money that we were waiting on to get some road paving done. We did do a piece in North Street, and I will explain that. There was an old gas trench on North Street that had settled and deteriorated and was a disaster. We took that piece of North Street, that half of the road, we milled that trench out and repaved that half of the road. So the gas trench actually shifts. It starts on one side by the railroad tracks and then you get up around the corner and it shifts to the other side and runs all the way out to, to Route 1.
Someone asked me about that and I.
So we did that. One of the things that's nice about a DPW is that we also know what the Water Department is planning, as Lance and I are usually the ones planning it. So we know that we have a water main replacement project coming up in the next year or two on North Street that's going to run from Payson all the way down to Ashcroft. So that is something that we didn't want to put the money into, the resources into paving the entire street this year to go dig it up. That's always the story you hear about highway and water is that they don't talk. We talk. Bob's office is right next to Lance's. So we talk a lot. So along with that, we did a, a small piece of Camp Road, McCasland. We went down to East Belcher Road, County Street and Belcher Court. East Belcher, as, as people may remember, we have a widening project that we're planning. So from the S curve near Comcast, all the way up to Spring Street, the four-way intersection, we are planning to widen that road out. It's the narrowest road in town. At one point, I think it gets down to 16 feet. And it's a blind spot because you come up over a hill from Spring Street. So we actually have a design in hand from Weston and Sampson and it's going to come down to funding. So we got an estimate from them, roughly a million dollars to do that work. There's a lot of ledges. There's 40 to 50 trees that need to come down. There's some utility poles that need to be relocated. There's drainage that needs to be installed and then we get to pave the road. So there's a lot that's going to go into it. Some of those things we may be able to handle in-house to reduce that cost. But we are working on that. That is something. But again, that road was in such bad shape, similar to the piece on North Street. We just didn't want to wait. And what we did there was the piece that we're going to be working on, we did a thin overlay. We didn't spend the money to mill it. We didn't put back a full inch and a half because we know we're going to be there in the next few years, you know, digging up that road again. So it's a, it is a, it's a patch. It's temporary. So that's what we'll be doing on the roads. Good? All right. Tree and Park. So Tree and Park is made up of seven staff. We maintain over, over 200 acres of green space. So that's fields, that's parks, that's town properties. And we mow. We do some, some spraying for weeds. There's a lot of places that you can't get with a lawnmower. So we do try to treat those so that we're not fighting with that. We, in this past year, we took down 40 trees from the public right of way. So those are trees that the, Dave Lalliburie, the Tree and Park supervisor, has deemed to be hazardous. Residents call, they're dropping branches, they're dying. And that stuff we do internally. So we have a 70-foot bucket truck. Once we get past leaf season, so Thanksgiving through the winter, where it's not snowing, they're out taking trees down. And they're, they're taking trees down that are 70, 80 feet tall, which is impressive for, for a DPW. And that's part of, you know, Dave Lalliburie and what he's been teaching his crews, the crew. And we have a couple of guys that have been here 20-plus years along with, with Dave's expertise. So.
Just a quick announcement, Dave Lalliburie is going to be retiring.
It's at the end of the presentation.
He's 47 years he's, he's been here, but, but actually 49 and a half in total.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
But extraordinary, extraordinary guy.
Yep. We did reinstate the trash removal at Fields this year. Again, that was a hot topic a year ago during COVID. I thank, you know, UMM and AJ Dooley at the time and UMM for, for helping out over that year. We did buy, one of the things that we had to do when, when we, when we reinstated that was buy new trash barrels. So the, the blue 50-gallon plastic drums are no more. They do not meet our stormwater management criteria. So we did have to go buy new trash barrels. So those are the brown ones with an actual cover on them. So that is back in place and we are, we are back doing that and still doing that. As we get into, again, leaf season, we're doing our fall cleanups at all the town facilities. We work at the schools, we work on the Common, we work at Town Hall, we work at all the fields. And it's a, it's a constant thing now that the mowing is starting to slow down as the temperatures cool off. We're just constantly removing leaves and other debris from all the, all that green space. So. And then again, one of the other big things, important things that Tree and Park does is they do stripe all the fields for the high school sports. They do work with some of the local organizations, youth baseball, for helping them stripe, stripe their lines. And again, paint shortage. So one thing that Dave had to do through the summer was make phone call after phone call, trying to find somebody who had paint. I think he spent the majority of one week just making phone calls. And after calling, you know, 40-some-odd people, he found somebody that was able to ship it, got it here just before the first football game and soccer games happened for the high schools. So dedication on Dave's part to make sure that, that got done.
And I now notice those wrong trash barrels when I'm in other towns, like at sporting events. So we're ahead of the curve there.
All right. Equipment maintenance. So we have four mechanics in town now. Something that we did in the last year and a half during COVID, we had a couple, we had two employees leave from the Highway Department. We filled one of those positions and we actually shifted one of those positions into the mechanics, into the Equipment Maintenance Division. Something that we did just before COVID, during budget season, we had pushed for an additional mechanic. That was approved at the time, just before COVID hit and then COVID hit and everything went away. So working with, with the DPW, the team, the supervisors that we have, talking through what we could do with that. I, we got the, the two supervisors from those departments to, to agree that it was needed in the Equipment Maintenance Division at the time more than the Highway Division. So I will be back looking for, to backfill that position in the Highway Division shortly. What we have for equipment, we deal with everything DPW. So we have 78 pieces of equipment and trucks in the DPW. And that's, those are things that are registered and hit the roads or the fields. There's all sorts of small equipment beyond that, chainsaws, lawnmower, or other lawnmowers, weed whackers, generator stuff that gets added into that as well. The School Department has 38 buses now. I should say, they have 38 pieces of equipment. I will include the facility staff in that because they, the way we categorize it, they fall under the schools. So they have 38 vehicles. The Police Department has 31 vehicles, which I'm told is double what it used to be, going back even 20 years ago. That has doubled. And that was part of the presentation from two years ago, looking at adding that mechanic was looking at how, how these increases have been made.
Is that police and fire?
That's police.
That's just police?
It's just police. COA has two vehicles, Mark's Van Go, which is great seeing that thing drive around with the, the mural on the side. And then there are four admin vehicles up here at Town Hall, inspections, Board of Health. And so we have a total of 153 pieces of equipment that, that those four mechanics maintain on an annual basis. Water and Sewer. We have 13 technicians, four admin staff. Those technicians are licensed operators for both distribution and treatment. So we have 120 miles of water main in town. We have three, we now have three treatment plants. The third one came online a year ago. We have 13 groundwater wells. They are also sewer department staff. While it's, you know, the, kind of the lesser maintained, I shouldn't say maintained. It's, it's the lesser of the two. There's 22 miles of sewer. It's a smaller piece of, of the town. There are a lot of septic systems, private septic systems in town. Along with that sewer though, we do have six lift stations around town. One of the important things that we're just finishing up next week is our, sorry, unidirectional flushing. And that's something that we've done, the whole system every year for the last three years. And that's, we do half in the fall, half in the spring. And what that does is it actually works to move any of that sediment, iron and manganese sediment that's built up in the pipe in one direction and we close off gates. There's a hydraulic model that's associated with that that was brought in probably close to 10 years ago now, just after Roger started. And that, that helps maintain the system and clean the system every year. One of the things that they noticed is that when they first started doing it, the first time through the town, they would open up a hydrant. It would take them hours before they saw clean water moving through that hydrant. The majority of what they're doing now is half an hour, 45 minutes, and they're seeing that clear water, which is a, a good thing. It's, it also goes to the treatment plants that we have that is pulling that iron and manganese out of the system as well. Some of the capital projects we've done on the water side. And this, this kind of goes to the dedication of the, the Water and Sewer Commission over the last decade, bringing Roger in and then committing to improving the system. Just this last year, we brought the Pumping Station Road Treatment Plant online. That included four brand-new wells. We've just completed on Lamson Road this summer, three brand-new wells, replacement wells. We currently have from, there are three wells on Sprague Road. We have in that, that in design to bring those three wells over to the Witch Pond Treatment Plant. So instead of building a new treatment plant on Sprague Road, we have limitations with conservation issues. And the cost of a plant is now 11-plus million dollars. It's a three-mile water main. We can run that over to the Witch Pond Plant, take advantage of the Witch Pond Plant to its full, full design capacity and save the, save the repairs, you know, quite a bit of money by doing that instead of building a new plant.
So would Sprague go down then? Would that?
So the well, no, the, the three wells there will still produce water. Instead of going right into the system with a little bit of chlorine, they'll actually go through the treatment plant at Witch Pond. And that iron and manganese will, will be removed through that treatment plant. At that time, the, all of, 12 of our 13 wells will be going through treatment plants. The only one left is up on Route 1 and that's an emergency use only well that we haven't used in probably three years now. One of the, the big projects that we had this past spring and into the summer, the, the Route 1 water tank, that's the one at Patriot Place, received a full interior and exterior renovation. And it's now under a 15-year maintenance contract. So now, now that it's been fully renovated, it is under contract for somebody to come in. They do all the maintenance. In five years, they'll drain it, clean it inside and out. Any touch-up work, any metal work that needs to be done, they'll take care of that. Following the model that we've done with the reused tank across the street and the Hill Street tank that we did six years ago now. So those are, those things are best left to the people that know what they're doing and have that expertise. Along with the tanks, we are almost complete with a new million-gallon storage tank on Hill Street. That should be, will be, scheduled to be substantially complete by December 1st. So that is redundancy in our system. It's important that the 3-million-gallon tank that sits right next to it, we can drain down and take offline to do maintenance on. Also, it gives us an additional million gallons in storage. Also, it gives us an additional million gallons in storage in case there's ever an issue. We saw a couple of weeks ago where we knew there was a water main break somewhere in town. In a period of eight hours overnight, we lost roughly two million gallons of water. We ended up finding it down at the terminals, down off of North Street, shut it off. Were able to regain that water in a matter of a couple of days. But it just gives us that extra capacity in case something like that does happen. So what's next? I'm going to let Lance talk a little bit, at least on the first two topics. We've got MS four and dams, which are exciting. Two of the two of the big things that Lance has been working on in in the last year and a half, similar to what happened to me when I started. Roger looked at me and I said, who's doing the stormwater management? He said, you are. So Lance started and I said, Lance, guess what you get to do? So Lance Lance is is now the stormwater management guy in Foxborough, and I'm going to let him talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So yeah, stormwater, the neglected utility in, you know, many regards, but we're doing our best here. We last year, we as part of the annual permit requirement, we had to inspect every single outlaw, outfall, drainage outfall in town as part of that requirement, look, look for dry weather flow conditions. So basically had to not be raining for a period of about forty eight hours. And that's when we could try to get out to the outfall and try and take a look at it. And if it was flowing thereafter, no rain or anything contributing to that, that's, you know, need to be tested and analyzed for any contaminants. Or, you know, the big thing they're looking for, they want to make sure there's no sewer cross connections or anything like that. Which in a community like Foxborough where there's very little sewer to begin with is was highly unlikely to begin with. We and, you know, thankfully, we didn't really find anything significant. So that went very well, thankfully, because otherwise it triggers a whole other, you know, series of things that need to be done to address that. So thankfully, that went very smoothly. You know, outside of that, we're trying to, you know, keep a keep on top of the catch basin cleaning as much as possible. You know, it's always a challenge. You know, our existing truck, catch basin cleaning truck, you know, it's it's older, you know, needs to be replaced.
I think it's a nineteen ninety truck.
Yeah, so it's a it has issues and isn't always functioning up to the standard that we we wish it would. And, you know, that's inhibited some of our, you know, efforts to keep these basins cleaned. So hopefully, you know, we can get that updated in the near future. You know, we have a mandated requirement that these, all these basins need to be kept at, you know, the sumps need to be stay below fifty percent full at all times. So as we're out there cleaning them, we're taking measurements, you know, we're trying to, you know, and then we're keeping track. And anything that's, you know, found to be over fifty cents needs to be cleaned more frequently. So, you know, we're trying to sort of set that pattern, see, you know, where our real problem areas lie. And it's it's difficult right now with the equipment we have to, you know, really get a good baseline, but we're doing the best we can with that. You know, public education outreach, you know, a big part of that is our partnership with the Napa River Waterset Association. They're a huge help. We were a member of that. They help us with a lot of our compliance issues. They help us with mailers, they do social media outreach, they do all this, you know, with the dog licenses. They have, you know, bag your poop notifications and all that good stuff. You know, I've seen I've seen catch basins full of those bags in other communities. I haven't seen in Foxborough, but that is a problem. So they've they've been a huge help and it is a, you know, it's been a good cost benefit to the town in terms of service they provide and what we pay into that. This year, year four requirements, it's not crazy onerous. The big things are, you know, we need to identify at least five permitting owned properties for BMP construction, best management practice. So like, you know, something to help treat it. We've we have that report done already with NEPRO. They helped us complete that, so we're all set on that regard, that's ready to go. The other two things is we need to develop reports assessing our current street and parking lot guidelines, you know, and how we could reduce impervious cover. Like, so they want to look outside the stormwater regulations at every other regulation in town, basically, that could build, you know, allow for impervious cover and see what we can do to minimize that impact essentially. And in addition to that, they want to, you know, look at our regulations to see what what we can do to make green infrastructure practices like, you know, preferred or more allowable in any cases. So those are the big three requirements for this year that we'll be looking at. And you might see reports sort of looking at our regulations in that regard. Always need for more funding. You know, we talked about the utility, stormwater utility, we probably think believe we brought, you know, the town manager from, sorry.
Westwood, Mike Gillette.
Westwood, Mike Gillette came in, talked to you guys at one point about that. You know, still looking at that as a possibility. You know, we're doing the best we can, but we're not doing as like as best as we should probably in some regards. So there really is a need for additional funding in stormwater. So but, you know, Bill's working with us and we're doing, you know, as much as we can in that regard. So it's it's tough, you know, we're trying to make ends meet. So in regards to dams, which kind of segues from stormwater. You know, same thing there, we get a lot of need for funding, a lot of things that need to be done. You know, six emergency action plans need to be done. We have, you know, inspection requirements, those kind of things. You know, in total, it's really, you know, it's about three hundred thousand dollars worth of just compliance and inspection reports. That doesn't even result in like actual physical construction being done. So it's just in the compliance, you know, reporting structure, it's there's a lot of need there. You know, and it's important and, you know, so that's another need for, see, we're talking, again, we're talking with Bill about working, you know, possible funding sources for that too. So those are some of the big issues there and, you know, for dams and stormwater, so.
So a couple of other things we're going to work on moving forward. We've heard a lot of comments about, you know, we have a complete streets plan, prioritization plan in place. You know, we we became a complete streets community. We've applied to the the grant through the state to try to get funding through the state to do some of that work, those sidewalk improvements, complete streets improvements. We have another application in this year. Hopefully, at one point, we'll be successful and be able to move move some of these projects forward. Along with that plan, though, comes with sidewalk management plan. You know, looking at all of the eighty eight ramp, noncompliance issues that we have. We know that the sidewalks in this town have not been maintained. You know, one of the things that we talk about a lot is maintaining what we have before we add more. And this is something I think we should look at with the sidewalk management. We do it with pavement management for the roads. We have a lot of questions coming up about when are you going to fix the sidewalks here? When are you going to do this? Something that we should think about working through that process is, and I'm just going to throw it out there, no, no thoughts really needed right now. But a lot of these subdivisions that have very wide roadways, they have sidewalks on both sides of the streets. A lot of these sidewalks were put in in the fifties or sixties. You some at some spots, you can barely tell that there's a sidewalk there because it's either moss covered or bushes growing over or grass covered over it. And clearly, they're not being used. The town should be working to maintain those. We should also look at, do we need sidewalks on both sides of the streets moving forward in these neighborhoods? The subdivision regulations, a lot of times these subdivisions will come in and they get a waiver and they only put the sidewalk on one side of the street. You know, again, looking at stormwater management, reducing impervious area is is a big thing for the MS four annual permit is. Did you get rid of impervious area? Want the ground that rainwater to go back into the ground where it's falling. Any piece of asphalt, concrete, rooftops, you know, all prevent that from happening. So that's something that, you know, we've talked about a little bit internally over the the last few years. But as we work towards a sidewalk management plan, that's that's a question that I'm going to bring. And as road commissioners, I think it should be, you know, a discussion here and part of that plan and a policy if need be to to look at those.
You know, off the top of your head, Beach Street, how much of that has sidewalk? Is there a space area without sidewalk on Beach?
There's sidewalk the entire length of Beach Street.
Is there?
On one side.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
On the water side, one of the big issues we have is our unaccounted for water. So at the end of every calendar year, we look at what we've pumped out of the ground and we looked at what's gone through meters and what we've actually billed for. The state DEP wants that to be at about ten percent at the highest. We have been as high as forty three percent in the last few years. We are down low thirties now. So part of that is leak detection. So we go around with our own crews, with a consultant. They actually go around and they listen through all the gates, the steel boxes in the ground, and they can hear if there's leaks somewhere along the way. They hear the biggest noise with the large leaks. And then, you know, as they as we fix all of those leaks, the smaller they get, they hear a little extra noise and they they've been pretty good. They they can pinpoint, you know, something as small as, you know, five gallons a minute. But some of these leaks have been were going on for, you know, an unknown amount of time. They're near a brook, they're, you know, in the woods, they're somewhere where nobody's seeing water bubbling out of the road. Nobody's losing water pressure. So that is something we're going to continue to work on. One of the big pieces with that is the water meters in town. So we have roughly fifty five hundred residential water meters. More than three thousand of those are more than ten years old. And these are mechanical devices. As they get to that age, ten years is kind of their life expectancy, they start, they actually start to slow down. We get a lot of calls from people that are, you know, they have, they got a big water bill, unexpected. My meter's broken, you know. Well, fortunately, what happens is the meters don't, they don't speed up, unfortunately. Over time, they slow down. And we we feel that, you know, one of those things is that to replace those three thousand meters that are now more than ten years old, and we hope to capture a lot of that unaccounted for water actually being used. We're just not metering it because of the the meters, the age of the meters. So, you know, one of the things Bill has, Bill has a big list from us for the ARPA money if we're able to use it for a variety of different things. But that's that's one of the things we are looking to use the ARPA money for, if possible, is to to do that in a lump sum, three thousand meters. We'd hire a consultant or a vendor to do that and get it all done in a in a quick timeframe. So one of the things in in the water budget, we've talked about infrastructure a lot with the water department, all the improvements that we've done. I I think we've probably spent thirty plus million dollars in the last ten years on the water department and the the infrastructure there. We are working to include a million dollars a year in the annual budget as part of the rates so that we're not doing large projects. We're not going to bond sixteen million dollars for treatment plant. We've done a lot of the large items. One of the things that comes up is, well, the water department spent so much money, you guys are in in good shape. We are on the large items. We have one hundred and twenty miles of pipe in the ground. A lot of that is seventy years old, if not older. And pipe, like everything else, has a life expectancy, typically fifty years is is the limit on a lot of that stuff. So a lot of that pipe should have been getting replaced over the years. It didn't, so now we're going to try to play catch up and we're going to work on that and building that into the the existing rates that we have for the water department moving forward. PFOS, I know it's been talked about here a couple of times in the last year or so. PFOS is what's known as the forever chemical. There's, I believe, over five thousand of these chemicals that fit into this category. This is something that is not regulated anywhere except for the water, within the water systems, within the treatment plants. It's in Teflon, it's in Gortex, it's in firefighting foam, it's it's everywhere. And once it gets into the ground, it doesn't go away. And unfortunately, it actually moves in the in the ground with the groundwater. So this is a, this is something that everybody in the country that pumps water and has a public water supply is dealing with right now. The Massachusetts has set a limit at twenty parts per trillion. We have two wells out of the thirteen that are above that. One is the emergency well up on Route One that we are no longer, that's no longer in use. Another one is down at the Witch Pond Treatment Plant, which, when blended with the other well that's on site, gets down below that twenty part per trillion limit. So we're we're able to use that well with it being a blended source. But that is something that a lot of towns are are fighting with and dealing with right now. Mansfield, Easton are two of the close, are close neighbors that have high PFOS in some of their wells. They're working on treatment plants for PFOS. It is different treatment than what we have in town. So unfortunately, going through the three treatment plants that we have does not remove that PFOS. It's a different treatment process. And we're probably in the in the ten million dollar range per location if we had to treat for PFOS. So we are are, we test for it on a monthly or quarterly basis, depending on the well. And we're keeping an eye on that and it is something that we are looking at. So it's it's fortunately not going to go away. Hopefully, we avoid it as long as we can. And I guess my other, one one more thing is, you know, the DPW facility rehabilitation expansion. So this is something that we've been talking about for a couple of years now. You know, falling falling in line behind Town Hall, some of the school renovations, library, public safety. You know, we have a lot of new facilities in town. The the library was renovated just before I got here. And, you know, something we're looking at is that building is now seventy plus years old, has had some minor modifications over the years, but nothing serious and is coming due. So that is something that we'll look at the whole site. It will stay where it is. A lot of towns look for a new location and spend a lot of money looking for a new location. We're going to stay where we are. We're going to use the building that's there, we're going to renovate it. But it does, we do need some funding to get that to a point of a feasibility study, looking at the building, looking at the site, find out what we can do, what we should be doing. There are regulations that we should be following, OSHA standards that we should be paying attention to. And something that I've been doing this through the last year is going through an OSHA class to look at all the things that actually hit us now. But that facility does need an upgrade. Again, some of the stormwater management things that tie into it, where we should be washing vehicles inside. We don't have a facility like that. So those are things that we, you know, would add into this plan to move that forward, to to meet the requirements of what we should be doing in town. I got one, two, I guess, two more slides. You know, just to touch base on what Bill Bill hit on a little earlier. About a year ago, we had a retirement in our water and sewer division. Phil Loader had been here for thirty years, retired as a supervisor and is enjoying life down the Cape. But I, you know, I would remiss not to thank these people as they're moving on to to enjoy life outside of Foxborough. So Phil Phil retired roughly a year ago now. I wanted to include him in this because I don't think I talked about him last year. Eileen Hurley is a department administrator for the water and sewer department. She's been here for twenty five years and she will be retiring, I believe, Christmas Eve will be her last day because it's a Friday. Eileen, Eileen has done amazing things and what she remembers and recalls and can pull out from a file, whether it's in a drawer or electronically, has been a role the difference for Bob in the last nine years since Bob Worley, you know, started. And she will be missed and we are working on her replacement. Hopefully, you know, we have an internal candidate who's been working over there for eight years now and is trying to learn everything that Eileen does. Although, from what I hear, Eileen is left handed. Jess is not. When she goes to to look at all of Eileen's files, everything is done by a left left handed brain and that's going to be something that she needs to figure out. And then the last, the third, the third one, Dave Lallibur, as as Bill was saying earlier, after forty nine, he says forty eight and a half years, but I I saw something that puts it at forty nine and a half.
Told me forty seven the other day.
Yeah.
He's going the other way, so I'm not sure.
You know, Dave, Dave has done everything here in town in the last almost fifty years. The knowledge that he has, the communication that he has, context that he has, whether it's the sports groups, national grid, recreation, everybody, you know, will be will be missed. But he is, he's ready and he's ready to go enjoy a little relaxation. And, you know, for me, being here almost eight years now, you know, it's been, it's been a joy working with him. And I will tell him that, you know, again, before he goes, he he's planning to go the end of December, so. So if you see him around, wish him well. I know that has spread and a lot of people already know that, is he's heard from people already moving around town, so.
It's over a hundred years of tenure right right there, so that's.
It's significant.
Yeah.
It is. You know, for Treeon Park, we have, you know, currently in a working supervisor who's been here for thirty years, working with Dave. I have another employee who's in Treeon Park, who's been here twenty five, and then a third one who's been here twenty plus years. So there's there's still a lot of knowledge in that group that's specific to Foxborough, which is which is going to be. Foxborough, which is, which is going to be good moving forward once, once Dave does move on. So. And then, I think, just one more, Public Works PR. You know, Public Works, we, we are first responders, we do pride ourselves in, as being first responders, along with police and fire. I, I don't think we get the glory that, that they do. But I think there's another one, the silent arm of public safety. You know, we, we don't do a good enough job talking about ourselves. So, you know, something like this, I do appreciate the opportunity to come out. I do not talk this much normally. But if I, if I get to talk about Public Works, you know, it is, it is something I'm passionate about. And, you know, just as, as we will likely be later on tonight, we will be out in the middle of the night, in the dark, you know, dealing with fifty mile an hour winds and two and, two to three inches of rain. And then move right into getting ready for snow. So.
It's a lot that goes unseen, you know, really, in the, in the dark of the night, to keep everything, everything functioning under, underground, above ground. So, thank you.
And I, I will say, that is something that every interview that I'm in with Mike for Public Works employees, he, he hears me say that. And, you know, I, again, I truly believe that, that we are. And some, some of the people that I talk to, and even some staff, they're like, you're saying it again. But we are. And, you know, I, I pride myself on sending staff home at the end of the day. And it's very important because I've seen too many not. So I just want to put that plug out there for us.
I'd like to just say that I have participated in a lot of interview processes with these gentlemen and, and some of their supervisors. And every time Chris says that, I, I jump right on the opportunity to agree with them, because that's what buses and, and fire trucks and ambulances and, and police cruisers don't get to where they're going without safe roads, without trees cleared, without the streets plowed. And these guys do a phenomenal job. So I just want to echo that.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Oh, great presentation.
Great presentation, Chris.
Thank you.
Always great to have you guys in. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just like, just to say, just thanks to both these guys, they do a tremendous job. They both, they work around the clock, you know, never, never complain, just, you know, you call, I called Chris the other night about ten o'clock about some, somebody had texted me in the middle of the night about, about not having water. And I called him, he says, oh, it's just a flush and hydrants, no problem, took care of it. And, you know, it's just, that's the way they are. So it's just, it's a great group to work with. You know, I'm very proud of what that these guys do. And also, and, and they're right, I mean, I, I treat them all the same, you know, fire, police, Public Works, they're all the same to me, because they, they all have an integral part of the service that we provide to this community. And I think I wouldn't, I couldn't do, we couldn't do any of it without each other's teamwork and, and collective efforts to make it happen. So thank you both for, for the work that you do, and for all your departments' efforts as well.
And I think the tenure, you know, that they were talking about shows the department's commitment, dedication, you know, to the, to the town of Foxborough. So you don't, you don't see numbers like that, it means something when people come and stick around that long.
Also, Madam Chair, on that, you know, on the discussion about public safety and, and Public Works part in it, Bill and I, along with Paige and Nick, were involved in a, in a, in an academic program several years ago about, you know, furthering municipal services. And during that class, we were there with, you know, people from all sorts of walks of life. And one was a DPW director who, who lost two of his, of his workers. And so it's, it's real, it was scary. One was, one was during the time we were in the class. And, you know, and it's, and it's tough. And when Chris says, you know, he did, that Chris and Lance and their, their mission is to send the people home, they, they take that very seriously. And we do have people out injured, actually a couple right now. And, and I meet with these people regularly. And it's not like they're, they're limping along, it's not like they're faking it, they, they get, they get hurt on the job because of the hard and dangerous work that they do. So I just, you know, I can't say enough good about these folks.
Absolutely. Can I add one thing too? I mean, you guys know I live in Summerfield, and, you know, we're, we're private. But Chris has always been available to us, like, for a quick phone call, even though, and I think at one point, he sent his guys out, we had a tree go down, and he just sent them out just to clear the road for us. Because then, you know, we have to get our management company involved to get somebody out, but just so that the road was passable. Or he's always been available for us just to give him a quick call. And, you know, we like to make sure we're, we're keeping up the standards that we need to have, you know, for our storm drains and everything. And he's always been available for a quick question for us to just reach out to him. And it's greatly appreciated by, by us over there too, even though we're a private community. So the dedication is, is truly there and much appreciated.
And Chris is, you know, the social media master for all that too. Let's not forget when he has to lob things out to Foxborough Discussion and hold his breath, you know? So that's, that's a big, it's a big task as well. So thank you.
All right.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck tonight with the storm.
Thank you.
See you in the next crisis.
All right. So we are right about on schedule. Our final agenda item for the night is, we've talked a lot about special town meeting. And this is the recommendation on the 2021 special town meeting articles. I know there's been a lot of discussion about do we, do we need or want to take a recommendation on the Board of Selectmen articles, on the Planning Board articles, and all the articles. I know that certain people on the board may feel a certain way, it's definitely been done different ways in the past. So with that, you'll see we put possible vote on here, because I wasn't sure how the board felt, do we want, we, we've talked a lot about this, but do we want to take a position on every article ahead of town meeting?
Well, can I, so I, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misspeaking last meeting. I have a pretty good memory, but I thought it was, was best to go back. And so I did go back, pulled the agenda from the spring. And, I mean, it said, our, our agenda said that we were going to review and recommend the warrant. And so I, once I found that, I said, okay, well, so let's go back and just, you know, I pulled up the meeting. You know, we did vote to recommend every article, including planning.
I don't think that there's any disagreement about that. Like, I went back to 2019, I watched the one that Jim was on the ORFIM board, he didn't vote on that one. So I don't think there's any disagreement that we've done it.
Well, no, but last meeting, it was, no, we don't, no, we don't recommend, we're just pushing the, the warrant forward. We only voted on certain ones, we vote on the ones that the Board of Selectmen sponsor, we do the, the citizens petition ones. Myself, I don't feel that strongly one way or the other. I just think we should be consistent.
I, I agree. I think we, I think that that's what we've been doing too, is going back and looking. And, you know, my thought, and, and I don't know, Seth and I talked quickly about it, just the two of us over the weekend, when we had to talk about something else. But, you know, when we moved the warrant forward to town meeting, I don't think we're going to put anything on there that we, as a board, don't fully support. I don't think Planning Board is going to do that. I don't think, I mean, citizens petitions is a different one. But it's almost like it's a redundant step. I think, I, I want to be respectful of, you know, Planning Board's articles, and they have a process, and they have public hearings, and they're governed by MGL Chapter Forty, they have to send recommendations to town meeting. You know, we all vote on these on town meeting floor, we can all get up and speak. You know, my thought, and, and I kind of wanted to hear what the board, board thought first, but I don't know that we necessarily need to take a stance on every single article. And I know that may be different than what we've done in the past, because like you, I went back and I watched a bunch of meetings. And a lot of times, it was just like, we recommend them all, and it was just kind of everything, except, you know, we'd take out maybe the budget, or maybe the, the sign on the ORFIM. But it is almost a little bit of a redundant step, but we've already voted to put them on, on the warrant. I kind of think, let, let, let town meeting floor decide as the way it's intended to be. I think if someone really disagreed with an article, I, I would absolutely give them the, the airtime at the table to discuss it and have a discussion. But I don't feel strongly that we need to take a vote individually on all these articles. But I'm open to see what, what the board says and thinks.
I agree, you know, with what you've said. I mean, looking at it, we have, you know, six zoning bylaw amendments. And my knowledge of zoning bylaw is less than zero.
And they haven't even finished one of them, just so you know, they haven't even closed the public hearing on one of them.
So I, I think that as a board, we're representing all the residents of the community. And at the same time, we know that the people behind the suggested articles are also responsible to other people in our community. And I think there's nothing wrong with us just putting it forward for the members at town meeting to vote their opinion, not necessarily our opinion.
Edcom has that other level of, they, they do take a position on all of them. So I think there are a lot of, you know, I think Ed just said, just said it absolutely perfectly where I'm at.
And sometimes, I think Seth will agree, Edcom is looking to see if the Board of Selectmen have any thoughts. You know, the, the, the warrant at town meeting does not give the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen. It gives the rec, it says right up the top, it will give recommended or not recommended, and will give the actual vote that was taken by Edcom. So like, like I said, I didn't really feel strongly one way or the other. But we, we pulled two articles la, last year, and out separately, and voted them separately. One, we, we voted that we recommended, one we voted that we didn't recommend. So that was, that was really just my point. If, if the, if the board doesn't want to do that, I'm okay. But I just don't think, from town meeting to town meeting, I mean, I think Doc might have said, it all depended on who the chair was. To me, that, that's not really the way, any one who sits at this board should be doing it. We, we come up with how we want to do it, and then we just stay consistent. So I didn't really feel strongly one way or the other. But, you know, la, last, last meeting was, we, well, we only vote on ours. We don't, we're not going to bother with planning, we only vote. But then, when I went back and looked, it's like, there were twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, there were four planning that we voted.
I don't think anyone disagrees with that. Like I said, I went back and I watched them too. So, you know, there definitely has been a lot of discussion, and I think it is good discussion. I can't say for sure, I wouldn't want to speak to a chair when this board turn, turn, possibly turns over in three, four years, that it would be like a, a policy. But I think for us, going forward, I think, you know, for this, for Spring Town Meeting, I think once we vote to send something forward, we have to support it enough as a board, that we do to send it forward, that it, you know, I don't think we need to do it again to take an actual stance.
Yeah. So we're just, we're just voting to send it forward and not necessarily recommend it or not recommend it.
Right. And I would almost say Edcom should be, and is intended to be, a very independent board. So I, I mean, I, I know that they're their own board, but I wouldn't, I almost wouldn't want them to look at us to see what are we doing for them to make their decision what, what they're doing, because they, they should be so independent.
So, Madam Chair, the, the, it's, it's, this really, this conversation speaks to the fact that you, as a board, have some level of independence as well. So you, you yourselves have the ability to say, look, if this year we don't want to vote on any articles, you don't have to. If you want to vote on all of them the next year, you could do that. If you want to vote on one of them the next year, you could do that. You always have that flexibility, because you're the board that has, the other, it's your warrants.
So you have, you have. See, Bill, I, I would respectfully disagree with that.
I, I appreciate that. But there's a reason.
Wait a minute. Why I would respectfully disagree, because that's not, you know, we're our own board, Edcom's their own board. But Edcom doesn't say, yeah, I don't think we're going to vote on this one, or I don't think, I mean.
No, they, they're required to. They're required to. That's, that's different. That's different. So you, you're not required.
So I would say, we should, we should have a policy that we're going to or we're not going to. You know, I mean, so, so we're gonna, at, at any given time, a certain board member is going to say, well, I support this one, I don't support this one, I don't want to. I just think it, we should be consistent, that's not consistent, by each year deciding if we're going or not. There's no consistency.
And I think we've had a lot of discussion this year to hopefully be consistent. So, Doc, I know you had something to say.
Yeah. And, and I couldn't agree more with Bill and, and against you, Steph, in the fact that different things come up at different years. And you never know. I think we can't have a policy. And when I said it was up to the chair to decide which way to go, I sort of meant globally, depending on what issue was in front of us at that time. And last year, we had those two public, what do they call them? Sorry.
Citizens petitions.
Citizens petitions. And one was, hey, we got to get this right. And one was, hey, this came from left field, we need a lot of discussion on it. And that, I think, had to be voted on as a board, where do we stand on that? Yet, nothing on this special town meeting, I feel, needs to be.
Why vote on, why say that we're going to vote on planning one time and not on planning? Or why say that we're not going to vote on anything? And you know something, like, we, I know think we're all in agreement that this is going to, in the, in the end here, we'll be at town meeting, on the floor, and the people, so I, there's just no consistencies of that, Doc.
But that's because there is no consistency in what comes in front of us.
Like, I can see if a citizens petition comes up that's not put together by a department, there may be a time next year that it would be important or impactful
Absolutely.
for the board to take a position. I can't think of an exact, you know, you never know what's going to come.
But so let me ask you something. So why, so either, either people are looking to what the Board of Selectmen want to recommend, or they're not.
Well, we can, because for citizens petition, we don't vote to put that forward. So that's the difference.
We have no idea it's coming.
Is, you know, we're, when we recommend, when we vote to move forward the town meeting articles, we're, you know, we're, we're letting all those go forward. So for me, citizens petition is kind of one, I'm not saying how we're going to do it every way going forward, but that could be an example I could see, you know, that it may be, may be important for the board to discuss, because it is not something that the board votes to put forward on the warrant.
But why, why do we have to make a recommendation then? I mean, if we already say the, the advisory committee is going to do that.
Because we may want to. And that's, that's up to the board to be able to do that.
Well, so.
I, I, I thought it was important that we, as a board, last year, give our opinion on that CIP. And the other one got lumped into it too. I think it was just as important, we, as a board, make the second citizens petition right, make it right, right to that person by the town.
So we've gone, I don't want to keep going round and round on it, but just to kind of move it forward. Seth, do you have any other thoughts on, I think you have some thoughts maybe about making sure we talk and vet things earlier, if you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, if I could just.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Stephanie and I disagree occasionally, respectfully disagree on certain things. And so this is probably one of the times where consistency is actually very, very low on my list of concerns and approach for this process. What is really at the top and what I care about is, is our role, as I understand it, is to deliver not just policy, but potentially law to, to the town, to town meeting. And so that, that process, I care a lot about, to the extent that we can, delivering the right articles and the, and the warrant that we think is, is appropriate. Because we, that's, that's our role, is to, is to deliver it. And so I'm not, in feeling, taking ownership of those articles, I feel like is, is what we're doing here. So if I'm voting on anything for this warrant, it's not necessarily a recommendation, it's saying, I agree that these are the right articles to go to town meeting. So that said, and to your point, Leah, I don't necessarily feel a lot of ownership around the articles on the warrant. So just for example, Article Three, zoning bylaw amendment, building height, using number of feet instead of number of stories, it made sense when it was presented to the Planning Board by our town planner and the zoning, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I don't have a lot, I don't feel strongly about that. It feels like the right thing. And I'm, I'm willing to accept that it's, it was done in good faith and written in good faith, and it's the right thing for the town. But I don't have a lot of strong sense of ownership. So I, I feel like I want to understand that better, know it better, before I say this is what I think is best for the town. But beyond that, everything looks reasonable here. So my vote will be, yes, I'm in favor of moving forward with this as the warrant as presented.
And we already have done that, so we don't need to do that again. I think.
Right.
One, one thing I will say that was kind of a lesson learned for this year is if something is to be sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, it can't come the day before the warrant closes. Like, we really have to understand that. And we have to be putting our, as a board, behind that to move that forward. So if anyone comes, you know, with something that's going to be sponsored by the board to go under the warrant, I would think we would need like a month's notice, or more to know it's coming down.
So that's, that's a good example of, of where I absolutely think you could put regulations or policy in place to govern. or policy in place to govern that, because there hasn't really been policy to address that up until now. So it's really been, you know, whatever comes on, is, goes on. And I think for something like that, if you are going to sponsor something, you should have the ability to vet it properly before it gets to that level. So I, I, I agree completely.
So it's almost like, instead of the recommendation coming in at the last minute, we need to have more discussions upfront.
Right.
When the warrant's still open and make sure we support, in theory, in a really high level, 30,000 feet, this moving forward to town meeting, so.
Well, because really, so say, planning or water and sewer, bring an article forward, they've worked on that article. Technically, the Board of Selectmen, we have not really brought that article together.
Right, but it's theirs, it's theirs, sponsored by them, it's not sponsored by us.
Exactly. But what I'm saying is, so even when, when an article says sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, have any of us had any discussion in bringing any certain article forward? That article is going to be brought by administration for us, which, which I, I'm agreeing, that's the way it should happen, but then all of a sudden, it's right in front of us, like you said, and we, we're sponsoring it, but we don't really know the nuts and bolts of it. So to give us a little more time, like you said, to get behind it, then, then, then I would feel more comfortable that we're bringing an article forward, because we're not really, like, planning is, is, you know, Paige's job, or water and sewer, they're coming up with that article.
And they're their own elected boards, elected to the citizens, so I, I feel strongly, I don't want to step on their toes.
Yep.
We're not the experts, you know, they have their process, their public hearings, whatever, they're governed by law. I don't think anyone's looking to, to get into those.
Honestly, I am. I, I want to take ownership of those. I know they're sponsored, but they're delivered by our board, so I, I feel strongly the other way, that we, we own those. So when there's an article about building heights and stories, I want to take ownership of that, and I feel like that's part of my responsibility as a member of the Board of Selectmen, so I, I would, I respectfully disagree.
Is that, I don't, I honestly, I don't know if that's accurate or not. So maybe it's that we need to have a meeting before, well, before the warrant to kind of know what's coming down the, coming down the pipe.
And I, I think as far as, and Bill, you can, you can give commentary, but I think that is, based on what we've talked about, that is accurate, that we are taking ownership and delivering the entire, entirety of the warrant, including articles sponsored by everyone except citizens petition. Is that fair?
Right, yeah. You, well, you actually, it's your warrant.
Right.
It's your, the, the Selectmen own the warrant, and so therefore, you can define the process any way you want. So in other words, if you want, before you put something, article on the warrant, you could say, look, you've got to come before us and present the article so that the board feels comfortable with it. You have the right to do that. That's not been defined up until now, but you have the right to do that. And at the same, same token, the other extreme, even if, if somebody comes in and has a really important article that they need to get done, and they didn't have enough time to get it to that process, you still have the option to say, look, we're still going to put it on because it's a board. So you should, that's why I mean about the point of flex, excuse me, flexibility, is that you want to make sure that you have the ability, that you don't just limit yourself completely. But you should define the process. I think that's really important to do that.
Well, I think it goes back even to the, the timeline we've been creating and rolling out over the last couple of years.
Right.
It's really been more around the budget process, but maybe it needs to be expanded, you know, to give some timelines for warrant articles. So I think that's a to-do, maybe that could be, if, if you seem to have some thoughts, maybe that could be something good for you to kind of work with, with Bill and Christina to kind of maybe blow out, because I think the more we have in writing on a timeline, the better.
Yeah, and that, that process is a little different with a, with a special than it is for an annual, so I, just to be, and we should look at that language to make sure that we're not breaking any rules there as well.
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so moving this forward, I, I would recommend that we do not need to take a vote tonight on, on these. And I think we may have to agree to disagree about consistency, because I think it really depends what's in front of us. However, I do think we have some work that we can do on the front end with making sure that things don't come last minute, that we're truly vetting things that are sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and then, you know, where applicable and appropriate, looking at some of maybe the other ones, working in partnership with those boards. I don't think we want to step on anyone's toes, but, you know, just, just be aligned to make sure that we're, we're marching down the path together and there'll be no late surprises. Okay.
And there may be other examples, that people have rules about that, that we can look at.
Yeah, yeah. There was one town that had a, I'll have to look and see what it was.
Warrant process.
There was a whole warrant process booklet. I'd have to go back and look and see where it was, I know I saw it somewhere.
There's, there's ones out there, I'm sure. So we'll look around for that.
I think it was Mashpee. So I really need a light.
Yeah, you're a little more steady than this, than, than even I am, in some cases. I'm like, wow.
All right, so with that, are we good to move on to the Assistant Town Manager's update? Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, I just want to talk, give you a little briefing on recruitments. Just open this up. So current recruitments going on are, we have five of them. So the Assistant Director of Public Health, so John Robinson has accepted a position up in the town of Maynard, so.
Oh, no, that's a new one that we didn't know about, right?
Yeah, that just came out. He's going to be a director, so.
Oh, good for him.
Just a couple of days ago. So, so we have posted that position, and we're, you know, getting that word out widely. Second one is Fire Department Administrator. This was a retirement, so Nancy Bach retired a little while ago, we have that advertised as well. And then you heard Chris talk about the Water Department Administrator, Eileen Hurley, she'll be retiring on December 24th, and we will be advertising that one hopefully by the end of this week, that's our goal. Trail Park Supervisor, a few days later, he's the very end of the year, so December 31st, looking to get that one out by early next week. And then the fifth one is, is actually a really late breaker. So our Library Director came into Bill's office a couple of hours ago and announced that he has accepted a position in Tennessee to be a County Library Director, where he will not only be the Director of one building, but also several branch libraries. And we've got a little more time on that one. So he'll be starting January 24th down in Tennessee, and so we'll be advertising it. We want to give that one, you know, we usually give eight, eight weeks, sometimes 10, we're going to give that a little more time than that. So we'll start working tomorrow on, on preparing that recruitment. But then I also want to give you just a, a look back, you know, just on, you know, what it looks like recruiting jobs, you know, what the, the next 12 months might look like based on what the last 12 months have looked like. So in the last 12 months, we've done 38 recruitments. Among those were, you know, 12 of them occurred because of retirements. We also had four that occurred because of people that we let go. And occasionally, we do let people go during their probationary period, and that's why we have a probationary period. We have six-month probationary period on, you know, on most, in most unions, and, and we have the, the option to extend those up for another six months. So, so that has happened. And then also, in addition to those 38 regular full-time recruitments, we also do about 22 seasonal recruitments between DPW and, and our Recreation Department and others, and also library. We do large, library pages and subs, which are, we also consider a seasonal type of a position. And then in a regular year, not this past year, but hopefully in this future year, we'll do 28 recruitments of senior tax workers to staff our, our desk here. And that, we've seen mostly empty, not at all times, but we're hoping now that the, the percentage of people vaccinated and as COVID cases drop off, we'd like to see, see that. So that's what's going to be going on in the HR world and in recruitments. That's all I have, unless there are questions for me.
One thing we talked about before, can we add, like where it says for information on the benefits, viewer benefits pages, for information on collective bargaining, can we add that link that says for information on positions with Foxborough Public Schools that points to their page?
Just directs it to that page.
Yeah, just, we're not, they'll still have their own page.
The link to that page.
To me, like, it, there's, you think if you come to the town of Foxborough, at least at one spot, you'd be able to, maybe you have to link to it, but get to those jobs, but it just, it, it feels very siloed the way it's set up now, and I just think it could be good to link to it.
Sure, we'll talk with administration over there and, and, and work on that.
And then how about there's a library assistant job too, that's posted? Is that another recruitment that you're working on?
Yes, well, actually, no, we're not working on that anymore. That's one that I had previously mentioned, and we have, so we have a couple of recent hires. So library assistant in the, in the youth library, we did recently hire, do an internal hire there, someone who we were thoroughly impressed with, someone who had a lot of external, you know, graphic corporate experience, as well as, I think it's eight years in the Boynton Library. So, you know, so we're very, very happy to promote Karen Dugan to that position. Other, other recruitments that we just finished, so I think I mentioned at the last meeting, Laurie Tinty, we recently hired as an administrative assistant in the Town Clerk's Office. Ones that we hadn't finished up but have been going on that we wrapped up were in Veteran Services, Lauren Burrell is coming to us as, as an administrative assistant in Veteran Services. She's coming to us from the town of Middleborough. She likes what we're doing here, she likes the reputation that our Veteran Services Department and, in particular, our Veteran Services Director have, and she was attracted to Foxborough and the town of Foxborough in general for those reasons. And the other one that we just finished was Council on Aging, the Department Administrator. So that's one, was one of our 12 retirements that I talked about. So Elaine Repoff is retiring there with about 20 years of service, and we've just hired Lauren, no, Kristen.
Pellerin.
Pellerin. And she has just recently started shift, she's got a week on the job now. And so we're very, very happy with all of those recruitments and those hires.
Great, it's good for me, I like to know like when Elaine's gone or Matt's gone to the Town Clerk's Office, just good to know. Good to know who we're working with when we make our calls and need, need favors. All right, great.
All right, so just a couple of things, important things though. Earlier today, I'm pleased to announce that the town of Foxborough was named as a cyber-aware community recipient. We, we were one of 34 communities throughout the Commonwealth that were identified as, as a, as a community that is committed to cyber awareness and training, and we've been training all of our employees in cyber, in cyber tactics, so that we have, so we're aware of situations, so that we, so that when we are the victims of, of attacks from the outside, that we know, we can recognize them when they do, do happen, and we're able to offset them, and so that don't impact our systems any to great significant level. So we are, again, recognized earlier today by the Secretary of IT for the, for the entire Commonwealth, as one of those communities that received that award. Some other, another significant point of information for you is that this is, this is really important, I think it's actually, I think Mike Stanton, who's just joined us, will, will appreciate this as well. We've been talking about OPEB, and, and we actually thought that our actual, we'll say we'd be back in the spring, but it actually came back earlier than we thought. And so we've been talking from the beginning that we were going to try and retire that debt by 2038, and that's what's actually listed in the financial policy itself. And I felt that we were probably going to be, based on the way the fund had been performing, that we probably would be doing better than that. I'd estimate it would be 2035 at the best. Well, fortunately, we found out today that it's going to be 2033. Actually, our financial, our performance has been so good, that we shaved off five years of liability performance in, in that area. So we're, so which, which is really significant in many ways. But first of all, is that, you know, it's five years less that we have to continue look forward to spending for that. It actually will free up some additional money that we can talk about as part of the policy that we'll be talking with Mike later on tonight. But also, what it, what it is significant about is that it almost aligns itself exactly with, with the pension retirement as well. So the pension retirement is going to go around 2031 at this point, so if, and if I dare say that in two years from now, if it continues on the track that we're on, we could easily be on that same track. So they both, both be retired at the same time, which would be very significant for the town, because it generates probably close to $4 to $5 million of extra revenue capital that the town could use for a number of things in, on our, our list of growing concerns. So that's really, really good news. I was able to get that information yesterday. It's also significant to point out that, that Foxborough is 35.2% funded in its OPEB, which is really significant for many reasons. One is that out of the 70, there's only 79% of the cities and towns in Massachusetts that are funding OPEB, and of that, only 11% are 20% funded. So we're in the, we're in the very, very top tier of those communities being funded in that area. I would dare say we're probably in the top one, two, or three in terms of our funding level for that particular area. Norfolk County Pension, which is 63.5, 63.5% funded, is expected to be fully funded in 2031, at which point the town can relocate funds towards paying our, down the OPEB if we pay that off first. If they line up perfectly, that's even going to be better. We cannot estimate how much will be available for roads once it's fully funded. Obviously, we don't know that number, but, but certainly, what, the dollars in the future are going to be worth less, less than they are today, but we still, we still know that, but we will still have an annual service cost that will go along with that, but certainly any additional amount, which is talked about in the policy, we'll visit later, we'll, we'll be looking towards, to redirect that towards roads as part of the commitment that was made back when the, when the, when the Mills tax was first adopted by the town for both the OPEB and the Mills and the roads, and the roads commitment. So that really fulfills that commitment on both ends. We, the, all of the numbers are dependent on our demographics and expected retirements and replacements, so that will determine whether or not, what, what factor that will be playing into the overall OPEB retirement date, and also, and it will also determine, you know, how our investments do over the next several years as well. So we'll have to continue to, to track that. But this, what's even more significant is that this, this appraisal was not, was done prior to us making the two additional payments that we need to make, one for this year and one for next. So that actually could reduce that number even lower. So I'm, I'm really pleased to, to announce that information. It was great news to be able to report when I found it out, just, literally just yesterday. Again, the town meeting just is on November 15th at 7:30 at the high school, just another reminder about that. Mike mentioned Manny, Manny Lee leaving for Blount County, Tennessee. And, and number 10 is the, is the seal. Christina, do you have that, have a picture of that you can bring up on the screen? So you see a picture on the screen for everybody to, to see, that's a, that's a picture of Mike Davison. You recall that Mike was, was the architect and, and the carver of the, of the seal behind, that sits behind Leah right now. He actually agreed to make additional, additional one for, for our office that will actually, you have one on both the first and the second floor now. So you can see, this one's a smaller version of that, but just as detailed and actually remarkable in terms of the skill that he's put into that. And we just want to publicly thank Mike for the work that he's done. He's holding up the picture of the, of the, of the, one of our documents that has the seal written on it, so he's actually been able to show that he's done both of those. So he's obviously very proud of the work that he's done, he should be, because as you can see, that's a lot of detail goes into that, it's extraordinary work. So thank you very much, Mike, for that effort.
And he's a veteran and a Foxborough resident, isn't he?
He is, he's, he's a veteran and a Foxborough resident, and just recently retired test pilot for, 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 as, for the Air Force, or for Boeing. I guess he did, did a lot of different testing.
For FAA.
For FAA, for FAA, thank you. And extraordinary guy. A reminder too, that the fire awards ceremony is going to be held again this, this coming Sunday, the 31st. I'm going to be letting everybody know, I'm going to be out of town for the next week or so, and Mike is, is as well, so if, maybe if the board, any of the board members could attend, it's going to be on Sunday morning, there's a mass in the morning.
At 11.
At 11 o'clock at St. Mary's Church, and following that, they, they have the ceremony right at, at the Public Safety Building. And there are some really nice awards that can come out this year, and I think they're very proud of that effort, and I think it's a great event. This will be the first one I think I've missed since I've been here, so sorry to see that happen, it was that date, but certainly it's a great event, just want to make sure everybody's aware of it. And then last but not least, I do have a couple, actually, items that I had in my report that I wanted to bring up, certainly were the update in the Trash Recycling Group, we did have our first meeting, we're trying to focus our attention on a few items so we can get the community, the organization or the, or the group rather, focused on a few items that we can probably get it, get done over the next few months. An update on the American Rescue Plan, we, we actually just, I just authored a letter that was sent to our Congressional District. was sent to our congressional district, congressional delegation from the Senate, as well as the whole of Congress, relative to the American Rescue Plan. We've discovered in our research that, that the way the current Rescue Plan language is written is that communities like Foxborough who had a significant loss of revenue during the past year and a half, two years, are not able to really apply that loss because of the way the language is written. It actually says that we have to actually apply grants such as the, such as the, as the school building grant against those losses, which obviously doesn't sound correct, because that's for a one, single-purpose type of grant that goes towards debt. But they're using that as an offset, which then would show that we don't have any kind of a loss at all. So, that's, that in of itself is a wrong approach, and I think that was not done, that was done, you know, not with that kind of intention, but more of a misstep along the way that we're bringing to the attention of Congressman Auchanclaw, as well as Senator Warren and Senator Mackey. And Senator Mackey is actually leading an effort towards trying to correct these kinds of errors in the language, in the treasury language, and hopefully, we'll have some push on that. But, you know, you'll have a copy of that letter in your packets as well. And then, last but not least, I did approve the use of town property for the Halloween Parade on October 30th, and approved use on October 15th for the filming of The Mediator, which was filmed by Jerry Love, and she used, I believe it was the, it was the Recreation Headquarters Site.
Frog Pond, I saw something online about.
It may have been Frog Pond, that is what we're looking for. It was at, it was on the playground site.
Yeah.
Where they used it, so they did a filming down in that area. So, that's it for my report, Madam Chair.
For selectmen's update, we did have one item that came in after the agenda was posted, but I didn't think we had to wait for the next meeting since it wasn't anticipated in the 48 hours before, and wasn't too controversial, but just a motion to accept a donation of $502 to the historical proceeds, and that came from the JC's Annual Craft Fair. So, that great event that resulted in a donation to the Historical Commission, so I didn't want to hold that up, and I asked the board if we can move that one forward under new business.
You sort of read it, could I just second it?
Yeah, yeah, so moved. All right, any further discussion or concerns about taking this one? Okay, great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. And then, under old business, something that we kind of teed up last meeting, talking about getting a warrant article out in advance of Springtown Meeting, I'm sure many, many boards have seen, or many citizens have seen, just a shift from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. I think when we've talked about it, there hasn't been a strong favor, but it is something that I do think, you know, most towns are moving in that direction. I actually, that's why I read Mash's piece, was because they, they were doing it and doing my, and doing some research for this item, so it would involve a bylaw change update at town meeting in the spring, so I wanted to tee this up. Any concerns from the board to move this forward? Any thoughts, concerns, no?
No, a friend of Doc and I, this is actually a select woman in Norton, and they call their board Select Board.
Yeah, people almost pause, I mean, maybe being a woman, it doesn't bother me, but people pause and want to, you know, they want to say Select Board or Select Person, so I think it's time that we, that we make the change and kind of.
So, there's two ways you can look at this, and we talked about this today, so certainly the formal way would be to go through the bylaw process, then you would have to change all of our media, all of our, all of our documents to reflect that going forward, but and then there's the other, is the informal process, where the board can refer itself to itself as the Select Board, but still refer, do your formal documentation as Select Men. So, you, that's something you can decide on, I don't have, I don't have a dog in this fight, I'm not looking to persuade you either way, but just consider that, that you do have a second option.
I've seen, every community that I've been seeing doing this has been done, has done it the formal way, so that was my thought, I mean, I feel like if we're going to do it, let's do it the formal way, rather than just call ourselves something else, but not really do it, so, I mean, my vote would be to just move forward with it for Springtown Meeting.
Yeah, I think we can do a find and replace on the website.
Yeah.
Pretty easily, and a gender-neutral name at this point makes sense to me, so.
Yeah, it's not something that, like, I don't feel offended if someone says, says, you know, oh, you're a selectman, it's not offensive to me, but I guess just moving forward with the times and, you know, you know, I'm sure back in the day, I mean, I don't, I don't even know who our first female select person was, but I guess maybe it's just going with the times, and so, it's probably the right thing to do.
So, let's put a placeholder, go ahead, Doc.
No, I'm just, yeah, I like to go either way, lean more towards a traditionalist, and staying with the old way of doing things, but.
What value do you see in a tradition that is, doesn't add, what value do you see it adding?
No addition or subtraction at all, just the fact that there are certain words, I think, in our dictionary that are, even though it has the last three letters M-A-N on them, doesn't necessarily mean it's a gender, per se. Woman, for example, I mean, woman's got man at the end of it. So, I'm just saying, just because of that, I'm a traditionalist, I think there are just certain words that are, even though they have the word M-A-N at the end of it, is still a gender-neutral word, and a prime example is woman.
Did you ever thought of it?
Well, I was actually hired by a Board of Selectmen that had two women on the board, and, you know, they seemed to cope with the designation, but times have radically changed, you know, about a woman's ability to certainly manage a community.
Who were those women, Ed?
I can't remember their names.
I mean.
They're on the spot, I don't.
Like, how many years ago?
Twenty-two years ago.
And I would have guessed Ginny Coppola would have been the first woman.
Well, because in my mind, like, in my mind, like, I think of Ginny.
Lorraine.
Lorraine.
Yeah.
Linda Walsh.
Linda Walsh, yeah.
But anything before that, before me, well, I do know, when I first worked in Foxborough, before I even met Jimmy or got married and lived here, I worked for Jerry Rodman, and at the time, there were three. So, I believe it was him, Mike Coppola, and maybe La Chapelle at one point, or, so that's, I only knew of the selectmen in Foxborough because I worked for Jerry Rodman, but at the time, there were three, so I'm not even, sometime after that is when they switched to five, but I would, the only three in my head before you or I is, I just think Ginny Lorraine and Linda Walsh.
And I will say, I kind of feel like you, Doc, but I will tell you, as a woman, people actually, you physically see them, like, stop, and they don't know, like, you know, they get, they pause at what to do, so I think, you know, it's just, I think it's time, and we can see what town meeting floor says, but I'd like to see us just put a placeholder on that for the spring, so this might be the earliest article with a placeholder, coming off of the earlier discussion.
No, you are right, because people, people.
People pause.
I can feel them do it.
Yeah, they get uncomfortable.
It's not offensive to me at all.
Same.
But I think it's the person, they almost be like, should I have said person, or woman, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's just make it neutral.
So, let's, yeah, let's, let's bring it forward, so, any other items? One thing that I just didn't mention, too, I asked Recreation what they're going to do about the parade with the forecast on Saturday, and they're going to make a decision on their events by Friday, so we'll approve it, but there is no rein date that we're looking at either, so. Anything else?
I have one quick question, I thought of it, but I want to check before I ask Bill, because when he was talking about OPEB, do we have a number yet that's going to slide into there?
Yes, well, it's, yeah, for the, for the, for the motion?
Yeah, for the.
Yeah, well, we have the motion, it's a million 62,000.
Okay.
And it, but it's made up of 948,000 for free cash, and another amount from water, and another amount from sewer as well.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we have a number of action items tonight, and I think at least one or two of them may have some discussion, I assume. Mr. Stanton, you're here for the financial policy one, right, just so I can, can come to you as we move through these. So, let's move through the first couple, and I think we may have a discussion on the last one or two.
Motion to approve the temporary outdoor entertainment license for NPS LLC for the Magic of Lights events to be held November 19th through December 24th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way for the Foxborough Recreation Department for the Halloween Parade on October 30th from 2:30 PM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a $400 donation from Friends of Foxborough Recreation for Halloween Events.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept $420 donation from Friends of Foxborough Seniors for History at Play Rachel Revere Program, and half of July, August, and September Tai Chi classes for the Council on Aging.
Second.
Any further discussion? We always love those Tai Chi classes, Denver gets old every time we approve them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the conversation about the policy?
Yeah, so let's have a little bit of the conversation before the motion, and I'll let Seth and Bill kind of lead this discussion, because I know you guys have had the most, the most discussions about it. We had seen this policy, there were some adjustments that were made, other boards had weighed in, Mr. Stanton talked to Bill, I believe Seth was in that meeting, or separate meeting?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
We had one bill came down to our meeting, and everything's resolved.
Okay, so on you, since the rest of us weren't there, just a quick update, I'm glad to hear we're resolved of where we are.
So, the, the language that Mike was looking for, and ultimately his Water Commission were looking for, was that now that we're talking about the prospect of eventually getting to retiring the OPEB liability, the question is, what happens to the meals tax money after that? And so, if we hock it back to the history that goes, and that goes back with the use of the meals tax, and how it was first approved, the two very significant uses were for OPEB liability and for roads, and for roads, road improvements. So, what has happened over the years is that there hasn't been enough money generated to fully meet the, even the obligation for the OPEB each year, so as a result, we're not able to really put a lot of money towards roads in comparison each year over year. In fact, this year, we weren't able to do anything for that, because there just wasn't enough money to do it. So, what this would do effectively is that if, in fact, once, once the OPEB liability is, is removed, the remaining money would then be generated to use towards roads and to pay for the road improvement program overall. So, and I think that's what they were looking for, it didn't seem unreasonable to me to make that language change, and in fact, I think it's consistent with what the history was of the whole situation. So, I'll defer to Mike.
Yeah, just, I'd like to thank Bill for coming down and helping us work through it. We're all satisfied, but I think it's important to answer the most frequently asked question that I got, is it's, it's important to understand that OPEB, the OPEB payment is made up of two components. One is our current, and the other is for a unfunded portion. So, we're talking about retirement, or this or that, or satisfying, all that means is that the payments that had built up in the past, the arrears, the liability, that's retired. OPEB is still going to be funded out of meals tax going forward, so that piece that we're talking about is the part that is currently being paid to make up for the deficiencies in prior years.
Correct, that's exactly right.
But a lot of people, again, I had to answer that, that was the biggest question I got all week on it.
Right, yeah.
Well, because it's other post-employment benefits, so retirees that are still here working are still.
Yeah, there'll always be people.
It's just getting us up to track.
It's like the pension program, the same way.
Well, yeah, this is the health component, retiree health.
So, it's just that we had a large unfunded liability that's being cleaned up, unfortunately, getting the, we tried in vain to find out how the actuaries make it up, but we're happy, I think we're, last time we talked about, we had a concern with the stipulated sum, so now it's still in there, but at least we put in a performance standard, so that the, we're going to try to maintain our 85% going forward, and Bill also, I think when we were talking, we kind of had an uh-oh moment together, so he put in the whole thing about, you know, but for the exception of ongoing required contributions, so we're good to go on that.
Seth?
So, yeah, so that makes sense to me as far as the OPEB and the meals tax, and I think that's, so just for clarity, it's referring to the policy, obviously, as a state, as opposed to any bylaw or.
Right.
That's correct.
So.
Well, at some point, do we have to, so, you know, you'll talk to, you know, Bill had some emails going back with Jack from AdCom, and so, so it's like, everybody was there, but everybody remembers it differently. Now, for me, Jack swears that it was said that it was going to be split 50/50 with the meals tax. Now, I don't remember that at all, I remember being there, I remember, I actually got up and spoke at that meeting, because they were, you know, saying that restaurants and waitresses wouldn't support it, because somehow you were going to lose tip money if people, and I basically said, do you guys realize that, you know, for every hundred dollars spent, it's a difference of, of $3.50. Like, I think some people thought that they, that we weren't going from six and a quarter to seven, they thought, like, they weren't going to have to pay any tax. So, you know, I get up and said, as a server, I'm not, I'm more glad that the town I live in is going to get money back, I'm not worried about that people aren't going to tip me because they paid an extra $3 on $100, you know, in meals tax. Now, I just remember it being brought up, that it would be used for OPEB and roads. I don't remember anybody, that's just my recollection, Jack thinks he heard them say half and half, so at some point, if we're in agreement, or whether it has to go to town meeting again to be established, do you think, Bill, that at some point, we have to do that, so at least we know, like, you know, everybody just has a different recollection of what happened that night?
So, this is really policy at this point, it's strictly policy, I don't think you have to go to town.
And it's good that it's written now because of all this gray, and then, it was even gray that we uncovered after, you know?
Yeah, so, we're just good that, that we're funding the OPEB, and whatever's left would go to roads.
And it actually fulfills the total intent.
Yeah.
When you go back to it that way.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, people going forward are going to be glad that the debt from OPEB has been paid, and at some point, and like you've always told us, and I know Randy told us for years, that we were ahead of the game, you know, with other towns, so I think somewhere, you know, I guess people sit and say, oh my God, like a million dollars, we're making this payment, but it's got to be paid at some point, and to reduce it, we'll, we're just going to be better off going forward.
If it, if it, if it'll help, I actually once upon a time talked to Randy, I spoke to him directly about it, I said, you know, what was your recollection? He says, it wasn't actually broken up 50/50, he said, the commitment was to roads and meals, and that was it, he says, and then ultimately, the policy took care of how it was going to be used ultimately, and that's what it came out to be.
Yeah, good.
Right.
All right, so with that, I think we're good to approve it, and then you'll take this back to the other boards to sign?
Yes, exactly.
I had, so one other point.
Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine. So, the free cash policy as written, I feel pretty strongly that I would prefer a different approach here, so what I'm referring to is, so Section 7.
Yep.
Free cash policy. Free cash is a subcomponent of the general funds, unassigned fund balance, and is comprised of revenue in excess of budget amounts and unspent budget amounts, dot, 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 it continues. So, this policy implies that we're taking variances in budget line items to fund and recharge free cash, and so, as I mentioned to some, a couple of folks in the room, what I'm proposing and recommending, and I think is a policy that favors transparency and clarity, is to build free cash recharge into the budget, so where it recommends the target recharge of $2 million, rather than pulling that from this line item, this unfunded line item, or this over-earned line item, actually build a line item into the budget for $2 million of free cash recharge, so it's very explicit, it's understood where that money is expected to come from, and we, to the extent we can, we tighten up. And we, to the extent we can, we tighten up every other budget line item that may have extra revenue or under, under cost expense, if you will, so.
What you, what you would do if you did that? You would effectively create a $2 million surplus, which would then become, come under consideration seriously at town meeting. I don't know that you want to do that.
I think I do.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you why. Because if you, and not only that, Seth, what you, what we don't know and why it's written that way is because we don't know how the revenue is going to come in during the year. So it's made up of two components.
Sure.
One is the, is the revenue that we get from the outside world that helps build that. And the second is the, the money that doesn't get spent during the course of the year. So you could be in a situation that you are not going to be able to meet that obligation even though it was unintended, not intended to do so each year. So now, the reality has been, is that we've done a pretty good job of doing that. All right, so historically speaking, we've done, we've actually, and we've gotten close in a couple of years. I will tell you that the last few years, it was, we got by by the skin of our teeth in meeting that obligation. I would not recommend you do that, because I do think that what you're going to run into is that what'll turn out, it'll be, it'll be a target that people want to focus on. Not only that, it could be an issue for collective bargaining, because people will see that as a, as a free, as a free amount of money that could be used towards other funding sources.
But it's not free, Bill. It's, it's specifically dedicated to the, the free cash recharge, which is the town policy to develop.
That's, that's, that's the policy, but town meeting could do otherwise. You follow me? So, so I think that's the reason why I get concerned about that, is that I understand your, 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 your whole merit is understandable. I completely get that. It's just that your means of getting there would be problematic.
So what it does, I agree, Bill, what it does is it locks in a target for free, free cash. So it makes budgeting, we have to be more precise in other areas, because it's basically saying, here's $2 million and we are expecting this.
But that's really extraordinarily difficult to do. And, and just, I've been doing budgets for 40 years. It's very hard to do. It's very, very hard to do.
Do budgets as well.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll go back to the old days of spending your budget. This is done on goodwill. For many, many years, departments have been asked to, you know, don't, don't go on a spending frenzy in April, which used to happen. And it's, so I'm with Bill on this one.
What I would say is, because we've had this policy open since, since June, I'd like to move to accept the policy as it is, and then we, maybe we put an agenda item to talk about this, and we get, you know, Marie and George, you know.
Yeah, you'd better have a bigger conversation.
I think, yeah, just, so I.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that.
So, you know, maybe we, we accept the policy as it is to move forward so that we have an accepted policy, because we've done a lot of work over the last four or five months on it. And then if we want to look at certain pieces of it, I think, you know, let's have broader discussions.
Because it's a policy and it can be changed.
Because it's a policy, yep. And it, as a policy, it can be a living, breathing.
Correct.
Document. It doesn't have to be a bylaw. You know, just like we, we were able to, you know, make the shift that we did this year, and then we wrote how it needs two-thirds the majority to be able to, to do what we did, so.
And Bill, what's, I know every year is different, but is there like an average number in your head that we tend to dump back into free cash at the end of the year? I know every year is different.
Well, it varies, and it can be anywheres from, it ranges anywheres from $2 million to, to, to $5 million, you know? And that, and that, it really depends upon how much money comes in, how much money we're able to save. And so we cognit, consciously look at that, you know, six months into the year to say, okay, where are we? And how are we going to, and if I see things getting really tight, and money's not coming in, budgets are being spent, and, and there's no, and we're going to run into a problem, we tighten them up. And that's just the way it is. So we're getting to the same point that you're getting to, Seth.
We're always going to get the $2 million recharge.
We're always going to try, but the problem is, and I guess the problem is though, Seth, we haven't done it. We have not done it. So we haven't not done. So I, I think my point to you is this, is that that's a case where you don't want to fix something that isn't broken yet. So I, and I say that in all due respect to what you're trying to get to.
Of course.
Because, because I mean this in the sense that I get what you're trying to do and I support it 100%, but the means of what you're getting there, I think, would be problematic.
Because I feel like, I, I like where you're going with the thought of us getting the recharge, but I think, that's why I was kind of asking a gentleman, but the, the thing I would worry about is if you put the $2 million into the budget, then you're, you're going to have to, I would think that we would have to, without being guaranteed what the revenues are coming in, you would have to maybe raise the taxes to make sure you hit that number? Like, you know, I, I get, I get where you're going, Seth.
You'd be creating a $2 million cushion.
Become a line item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A line item. So if, if we haven't gotten, I'm sorry to speak out loud.
No, 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 no.
If we haven't received less than $2 million and what, other than, say, one year of anomaly with, with last year, and we're building $2 million into the budget, and we've never received less than that other than one year, there's pretty low risk there. And all it is doing is carving that out earlier. And so it is putting that in, in codifying it in effect and saying, we're expecting at least $2 million.
And I'm not, by any means, I'm not saying I disagree with you. It's just, it seems odd to me because of what I've, I've seen in the, the small time beyond AdCom and here, I haven't seen, we, you know, we haven't seen that. So it's not that I disagree.
Yeah, it's new.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a different concept. Yeah.
Doc had something.
Well, I think, just to maybe finish this up, is I, I think it's too restrictive. I think it's handcuffing, but I'd love to hear Georgia's and Marie's opinion.
George and Marie might have thoughts about, you know, how to use.
I would imagine.
How to use the theory and what's the right way to do it, so.
George would throw up in his mouth when you hear that.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I, well, they, you know, we talk from the same, same, same sheet of music sometimes, but I, but I, but fair enough, but, but they, you know, they're the technocrats when it comes to that, not me. But I will tell you that I just look at that from the perspective of, you, you really would tie your hands in, not only, but you create a target, which I think is really not your intended goal.
It actually is. That's exactly what I'm looking to build into the, to the plan, is to develop a target of free cash recharge, because that's what people expect every single year, is that we maintain our free cash balance and that we maintain our reserves, that we maintain our stabilization funds. And so making that, excuse me, very explicit is actually what I'm thinking about, to make the, the process very transparent and, and open, so.
All right, so let's approve it as written here, and then we can come back and have.
Yeah. Respectfully, like, I, I am totally appreciative and understand that approach, and I, I don't know that I will necessarily vote in favor of that, but I appreciate that if, if that.
Yeah, I think it, we've been working on this for four or five months. Like, we just have to close this out and have, and have an approved policy that takes care of all this other stuff, and then, you know, this can be a living, breathing document that we can always.
You can always come back and look at it.
Come back and look at it, that's exactly what I'm saying we do, so.
Be a great conversation.
Yeah. All right, so can I get a motion there?
Motion to approve the revised town financial policies.
Second.
I think we've had our discussion. All those in favor?
You're going to have a good night. Good seeing you all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stanton. All right, the next one is a town, use of town property policy, which was adopted on September, middle of September-ish, and we're just adding a fee portion to it. So the thought is, let's say, a, a non-town, let's say a private party came in and wanted to use the common for an event, it would allow us to charge people for that if we want to. There's no explicit fee set up, set in the policy. It gives us the ability. And then if anyone ever came, no matter who they are, and left a mess, the ability for us to assess a fee for that as well. So.
I think that the thinking there is that you, you could have somebody, a major corporation from outside of Foxborough that want, may want to use it for a location for an event for, and, and they may want to rent the property for a few hours. The board has the ability to, to, to set a number for that. But more, more importantly is that up until now, we really don't have any, any structure in place which says that if you, if you leave it a mess or if you damage something on the property, that we can go back and charge you for it. So I think that's really the key.
Yeah.
So it's written, so it's not necessarily an upfront fee, it's a.
Right. It, well, we would be, if, it probably would be if it was somebody who wanted to rent it that was an outside of Foxborough agency or group.
But then also the ability to charge a fee if, if there were, we, we hope every organization that we're approving, that we bet the process would not happen.
Mm-hmm.
However, it has happened in communities in the state. So it's really an unchanged policy, except for language to allow us to charge a fee if we want to. And this is for like, using the common, you know, not the rec fields, you're not approving that, but, you know, common is the biggest one that we get the application for.
Well, we actually are charging rec fields. Rec fields don't have control, that's still the town manager's control.
Yeah.
So, so, so it, but, but the reality is that more often than not, they actually rent those fields directly.
Right.
All right, for, for recreational purposes. So they have the ability, but theirs would be for recreational issues only.
Yes. So we're leaving their stuff alone.
So, so that you don't mean, so you mean not out of, like, out of town? Like, I know, like, right now, there's a recreation, like, if someone wants to use the turf field, don't they go, go through recreation?
They, they schedule through recreation, and then the question is, you know, it's, it's sort of an ongoing debate as to how that should be, should be applied.
Oh. Well, yeah, so.
Because it's a high school field.
Yeah, well, and actually, actually, I can't believe I asked that question, because I think I, there was a, a story where somebody, they, they reached out to, I think it was Pam in Bill Yucan's office, it was the Seahawks, and they want to use the turf, turf field, and I, I think they charged them like a hundred dol, like something or whatever, or whatever. It was like, because, because it was kind of unprecedented. Nobody knew what to do. Okay, so, so basically recreation is just taking care of like, just in town, or, you know?
We're not looking to touch recreations or schools, fees or their stuff. This is really more for other, other properties around town where there could be an application.
And Bill, would you, would you, how would you go about, would you just like inquire maybe what other facilities charge? Like, to decide what, what, what the rental fee would be?
Well, if rental fee, I actually approached the board about that.
Okay. We have, so he's approving things that we've done before, like, like tonight, like the, the recreation using the common. Yeah, he approved that. But we agree that if there's anything new that we haven't seen before, it's going to come to the board for us to review and approve before.
And, and, and you would.
And set the fee.
You would, you would kind of guide us to what.
Yeah, exactly.[1663.32]